I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 and Title 18A 10-3, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 4th, 2018, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, posted on its district website, and emailed via Blackboard connection. By state law, there is no smoking in this building at any time. Roll call. Mrs. Beviano is not here yet. Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Ms. Gilium?
Here.
Ms. Kozak?
Yeah.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Shahada?
Here.
Mr. Tapuleski?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Here.
Mrs. Welsh?
Here.
The following election was held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, for three members to the Linden Board of Education for a three-year term. Tracy Ann Birch, 2,471 votes. Kateryena Kozak, 3,053 votes. Ahmed Shahada, 2,341 votes. And one member for a two-year, unexpired term. Chenader Gilium, 2,498 votes. I now declare the following persons as duly elected members of the Linden Board of Education as a result of the election held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. For a three-year term, Tracy Ann Birch, Kateryena Kozak, Ahmed Shahada. For a two-year, unexpired term, Chenader Gilium. We will now administer the oath of office to the following newly elected board members. Tracy Birch? I, stating me. I, Tracy Birch, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and to the governments established and to the governments established in the United States and the United States and this state and this state under the authority of the people under the authority of the people. I, stating me. I, Tracy Birch, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law prescribed by law for the office of Member of the Board of Education. for the office of Member of the Board of Education. Am not disqualified as a voter am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to pursuant to RS 9:4-1. Am not disqualified due to conviction am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense of a crime or offense listed in listed in NJSA NJSA 18A : 12-1. And that I will faithfully and I will faithfully impartially and justly perform justly perform all the duties of that office all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Repeat after me. I
I. Kateryena Kozak
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
or affirm
or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
and that I will be of true faith and allegiance
to the same
to the same
and to the governments established
and to the governments established
in the United States
in the United States
and the state and this state
and this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I
I. Kateryena Kozak
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I possess
that I possess
the qualifications
the qualifications
prescribed by law
prescribed by law
for the office
for the office
of Member of the Board of Education
of Member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter
am not disqualified as a voter
pursuant to
pursuant to
RS
RS
19
19
: 4
: 4
-1
-1
Am not disqualified due to a conviction
am not disqualified due to a conviction
of a crime
of a crime
or offense listed in
or offense listed in
NJSA
NJSA
18A
18A
: 12-1
: 12-1
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly
and justly
perform all the duties
perform all the duties
of the office
of the office
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The mayor as well. I didn't know you were next. Repeat after me.
I
I. Ahmed Shahada
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and to the governments established in the United States
and to the governments established in the United States
and this state
and this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I
I. Ahmed Shahada
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
that possess the qualifications prescribed by law
for the office of Member of the Board of Education
for office of Member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified
am not disqualified
as a voter
as a voter
pursuant to RS
pursuant to RS
19 : 4-1
4-1
am not disqualified due to a conviction
am not disqualified due to a conviction
of a crime
of a crime
or offenses
or offenses
listed in NJSA
listed in NJSA
18A
18A
: 12-1
: 12-1
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly perform
and justly perform
all the duties
all the duties
of that office
of that office
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
While we're delaying for a minute, Mayor, I'd like to take a minute to recognize some of our dignitaries we have in the audience tonight. First of all, our Board of Education members are here tonight. Our mayor is here. Thank you, Mayor, for being here. I think we have enough city council members to rescind or pass some ordinances. Councilwoman Ormond is here tonight. So, Councilwoman Henry is here. Councilman Barry Javitt is here. Duly elected Councilman John Roman is here.
Michelle.
Oh, and I hope that Councilwoman Yama Kaisers is here. If you advertise and you need to do some business, now's the time to do it while we're going to take a short break while we're stalling, waiting for somebody. But it's a new year. Welcome back, everyone.
We do have a board member from Elizabeth.
Bethel.
Bethel. Bethel. I'm bad with names. I don't want to mess it up.
The pastor is going to hold the mic. Is he on his way, Dina?
Yes.
He's parked.
He's here. He's here.
Oh, he's here. Coming across the city, isn't he? Are you pressed?
Yes.
You're always pressed. Hello, how are you? Repeat after me. I
I. Chenader Gilliam
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance to the same
and the allegiance to the same
and to the governments
and to the governments
established in the United States
establishment to the United States
and this state
and this state
under the authority
under the authority
of the people
of the people
so help me God.
so help me God.
I
I. Chenader Gilliam
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
or affirm
or affirm
that I possess
that I possess
the qualifications
the qualifications
prescribed by law
prescribed by law
for the office
for the office
of Member of the Board of Education
of Member of the Board of Education
am not disqualified
am not disqualified
as a voter
as a voter
pursuant to
pursuant to
RS
RS
19 : 4-1 am not disqualified due to a conviction
am not disqualified due to a conviction
of a crime
of a crime
or offense
or offense
listed in NJSA
listed in NJSA
18A
18A
: 12-1
: 12-1
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly
and justly
perform all the duties
perform all the duties
of that office
of that office
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, I would like to entertain nominations for the Office of President of the Linden Board of Education.
I would like to nominate, with respect to holding the vice presidency of last year, I'd like to nominate Mr. Tracy Birch. Mr. Tapuleski, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Mrs. Birch, do you accept the nomination?
Thank you, Mr. Martuzzi, but I'm going to respectfully decline.
I'm going to conduct a roll call now for Raymond Tapuleski as President of the Linden Board of Education. Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. William?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mr. Tapuleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
At this time, I will entertain nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Linden Board of Education. I nominate Ray Martuzzi.
And I nominate Teresa Bellani.
Just want to continue. Do you accept?
I do.
Mrs. Bellani?
I do.
Okay. Roll call.
The first roll call is
for Mrs. Martuzzi.
Yes, for Mr. Martuzzi. Mrs. Beviano?
No.
Mrs. Birch?
No.
Mrs... I'm going to get this right.
Gilium? Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mr. Tapuleski?
No.
Mrs. Bellani?
No.
Mrs. Birch? I mean, Mrs. Welsh?
No.
So that's
Okay.
That's
That's Motion is defeated. His nomination is defeated. Roll call for Mrs. Bellani.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Gilium?
Abstain.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
No.
Mr. Shahada?
No.
Mr. Tapuleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs. Bellani.
Oh, thank you.
I think I'm going to deviate slightly and give the opportunity to any of the newly elected board members who want to say a few words before we go on to the rest of the business on the agenda. Mrs. Birch?
I would just like to congratulate all the new members and welcome them aboard. And we're looking forward to a great couple of years coming. And we can do great things, Birch, all of them. So, welcome aboard.
Okay. Mrs. Gilium? Ms. Gilium? Is that right? Gilium?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for electing me. I'm honored to be here and I'm ready to serve.
Ms. Kozak?
I'm hopeful you'll have the luck of having said that before and look forward to working towards this.
Mrs. Shahada?
I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity, my family who came up today, the mayor for swearing me in. And I can't wait to get to work with the rest of you guys. We're going to do a lot of good things in our town.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to resume now with a bit of a agenda. Yeah, personnel number three. Mrs. Bellani.
Personnel, item number 3A, reappoint Kathleen Gaylord as Business Administrator, Board Secretary, effective July 1st, 2018 through July 30th, 2019, per negotiated agreement. 3B, accordance with NJAC 5:34-5, and to exercise the duties of purchasing agent pursuant to NJSA 18A : 18A-2B, with specific relevance to the authority, responsibility, and accountability of the purchasing activity of the Board of Education, reappoint Kathleen A. Gaylord as qualified purchasing agent as issued by the Director of the Division of Local Government Services, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Item number C, in accordance to NJAC 17 : 27-3.2, reappoint Kathleen A. Gaylord as public agency compliance officer, effective July 1st, 2018 through July 30th, 2019. Item number four, reappoint Denise Cleary as Assistant Superintendent, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, per negotiated agreement. Item number five, appoint David Walker, Vice Principal, as the District's Designated School Safety Specialist as required by state law, PL 2017C.162.
Excuse me, Mrs. Bellani, if I could explain number five?
Most certainly.
Number five is in bold, ladies and gentlemen. Anytime you see an item in bold, and it's rare, is it because it was added after the time you got the agenda? The reason why this was added is it was going to be on the end of January meetings agenda. But we look closer at the law and we have to have this passed by January 17th. So what this is, is every district in the state of New Jersey under this law has to appoint a school safety specialist. It has to be an administrator in the district. It is not a paid position or a stipend position. It's just one of those extra duties that Mr. Walker is going to get. And he's going to be responsible for making sure that our district is in compliance with all of the state regulations in regards to security, which I feel we do very well. This is an added person to oversee things and make sure that we're doing the right thing. So that's all this is. It's in bold because it wasn't on the agenda.
So I move items number three through five of the personnel and just a second?
Second.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilium?
Abstain.
Ms. Kozak?
Abstain.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Abstain.
Mr. Tapuleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Beviano, would you go through items six through eight?
Yes, Mr. President. Parliamentary procedures, item number six, to adopt the Robert Rules of Order as the official parliamentary procedure manual to be used to conduct meetings and appoint the Board Secretary and Board Attorney to act as the parliamentarians for the 2018-2019 school year. Board policies, regulations, item number seven. Motion to adopt the rules and regulations of the Board of Education of the City of Linden by laws, policies, and regulations as stated in the Linden School District Policy Manual and job descriptions for the 2018-2019 school year. Adoption of official newspapers, item eight, to authorize the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and Union County Local Source to be adopted as the official newspapers to be used for the advertisement of meetings and legal ads and all other necessary public notifications for the 2018-2019 school year. Mr. President, I move items six through eight and respectfully seek a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilium?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mr. Tapuleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch, would you take care of order of business coming up?
Sure. Order of business. Motion to approve the order of business for the 2018 as follows. Linden Board of Education Order of Business 2018. Call meeting to order, salute to plaid, statement of adequate notice, roll call, approval of minutes, comments from the public, agenda items only. Reports, superintendent and attorney, standing committees, agenda items requiring a vote. Curriculum and instruction includes all items pertaining to education, athletics, and audiovisual support. Management operations includes personnel, negotiations, security, public relations, and contracted professional services. Support operations. Finance includes general finance, auditing of bills, official bonds, leases, and contracts, insurance, and annual budget of expenses of the schools. Facilities includes issues related to the construction of new buildings, acquisition of sites, and planning for future needs. It will also include all matters pertaining to the operation of buildings and grounds. Planning and policy, student judiciary. Reports of special committees, delegates, unfinished business, board member comments, and new business, comments from the public, and the government. I move motion number nine and seek the second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilium?
Yes.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mr. Tapuleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 10, I would like to take this opportunity to discuss this before we go on. We have established in the past that the fourth Tuesday of the month is for board meetings.
Third.
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 Yeah, it's been the third. Which, yes, and the public sides with the city council. And I know that a lot of citizens were unhappy with that.
Yes.
Yes.
So I don't want to have it on the
No, well, I thought we had, for some reason, I thought previously
I think we were going to change it.
Some were the fourth and some were the third. And it was once it interfered with school boards, Memorial Day.
These were all the third Tuesday.
These were all the third Tuesday?
Yeah.
No, the third Thursday and the following Tuesday.
The third Thursday and the following. So what I'm saying is, make it, if the third Thursday, most the third Thursday, most, some of them come up on fourth Tuesdays, and some of them come up on Thursdays, so what I'd like to do is say, make them all fourth Tuesdays, and back up the workshop meeting to the Thursday before that. It doesn't make, it changes to them.
Changes in February.
It changes February and March. Those are the two that are going.
Okay, so they're only conflicting with...
So those are the only ones that conflict with city council. Okay, so that's what I would like to do, so if you look at, just change twenty, February 20th to 27th, March 20th to 27th, so that they don't conflict with city council. One more time, Mr. Tapaleski. February 27th instead of the 20th.
So the 22nd was the 27th, correct?
So the workshop will be the 22nd on those two, because, and everything else is going to be the same.
Kathy's sending a copy out, right, Kathy?
Yes.
March?
March, right.
There was seventeen points.
Yeah, because February is 20th, so it's exactly, it repeats. Okay, so...
Not that it matters, and I don't want you to change it, I do have a conflict with March, no I don't, are you changing it? This regard.
Springsteen concert?
I have no conflict, I thought I had for Springsteen concert. That's the only reason why I would come with more.
So, Mr. Martuzzi, do you want to go through and then move, go through the dates and...
Well, she's gonna, I don't have this, right, well, you know, she's gonna send a copy out, so let's, then we'll, it'll go on the website, correct? Right.
So if twenty-fourth, the May 22nd, June 20th, those do not conflict with the...
Right.
They shouldn't.
And that'll appear on the website, am I not correct? Yeah, so everyone can see.
We will revise this, you will get a revised one as to the minutes.
That's great.
And then we'll advertise it on the website as per the 22nd and the 27th.
So, Craig, do you want to just move by to ten? Okay, I'll move by to ten on the tapes for board meetings. Have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bebiana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillion? Ms. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Okay, item eleven is ethics, and how we typically do this is that I will start off and we will do a round robin of every board member reading one of the letters of the ethics, and then we'll move it and go on, okay. So, pursuant to the School of Ethics Code, NJSA 18A, DIC, colon, 12 dash 24 dot 1, Code of Ethics for School Board Members, each member swears to affirm the following. A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, regulations of the State Board of Education, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought only about, only through legal and ethical procedures. I'm going to go towards Mrs. Galani.
B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to help and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Mr. Martuzzi?
I will confine my board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plan only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
Martuzzi?
I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer to schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that, to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises, nor take any private actions that may compromise the board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain, or for the gain of friends.
G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
Letter, letter H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available, after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
I, I will support and protect school personnel in power, in form as other duties.
And J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer, and will act on complaints at public meetings only, after failure of an administrative solution. I move item eleven, and ask for a roll call.
Second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry, you're right, my bad.
Mrs. Bebiana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillion?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swash?
Yes.
Okay, item eleven... Well, twelve. Item twelve is extensive, those, when we wind up voting on this, since all of our names are on here, when we, when you vote, if you're voting for it, just make sure you say abstaining for yourself, okay? Mrs. Bellani, you want to take that?
Most certainly. Whereas, the Linden Board of Education is required pursuant to NJSA 18A:11-12, and NJAC 6A:23A-7, to adopt policy and approval, to adopt policy and approve travel expenditures by district employees and board members, using local, state, or federal funds to ensure that travel is educationally necessary and fiscally prudent. And whereas, the Board of Education has determined that the training and informational programs sponsored by the NJASBA, NJASA, NJASBO, UCSDA, UCASA, UCA SBO, and ISTE, and set forth below are directly relevant to, and within scope of, the listed job titles, current responsibilities, and the Board's professional development plan. And whereas, the Board of Education has determined that participation in the NJASBA, NJASA, NJASBO, UCSDA, UCASA, UCA SBO, and the ISTE training and informational programs requires school district travel expenditures, and that this travel is critical to the instructional need of the district, and will furthers the efficient operation of the district. And whereas, the Board of Education has determined that school district travel expenditures to NJASBA, NJASA, NJASBO, UCSDA, UCASA, UCA SBO, and ISTE programs are in compliance with state travel guidelines, as established by the Department of Treasury, and within the guidelines established by the Federal Office of Malice and Budget, the OMB, except as superseded by conflicting provisions of Title 18A of the New Jersey statutes. And whereas, the Board of Education finds that a mile reimbursement rate equal to the OMB reimbursement rate of thirty-one cents per mile is a reasonable rate. And whereas, the Board of Education has determined that as participation in the NJASBA, NJASA, NJASBO, UCSDA, UCASA, UCA SBO, and ISTE training is information and informational programs are in compliance with the district policy on travel, therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Education hereby approves the attendance of the listed number of school board members and district employees at NJASBA, NJASA, NJASBO, UCSDA, UCASA, UCA SBO, and ISTE training and informational programs, and the cost of the attendance including all registration fees, statutory authorization travel expenditures, provided as such expenditures are within the annual maximum travel expenditures amount as follows. Dawn Bebiana, board member, Tracy Birch, board member, Shinoda Bureen, board member, Kathrazina?
Petra.
Kozak, board member, Gregory Martuzzi, board member, Ahmed Shahada, board member, Raymond Tapaleski, board member, Teresa Bellani, board member, Elizabeth Welsh, board member, Danny A. Robitosi, superintendent, Denise Cleary, Assistant Superintendent, Kathy Gaylord, Business Administrator, Board Secretary, and Michelle Doin, Director of Community Resources. Mr. President, I move item number twelve, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bebiana?
Yes, on all, abstain from Dawn Bebiana.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes, on all, I abstain from Tracy Birch.
Mrs. Gillion?
Yes, on all, I abstain on Shinoda Bureen.
Ms. Kozak?
Yes, on, yes, on all, I abstain from Katya Jenna Kozak.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes, on all, I abstain from Greg Martuzzi.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes, on all, I abstain from Ahmed Shahada.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes, on all, I abstain from Raymond Tapaleski.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes, on all, except I abstain from Mrs. Bellani.
Mrs. Swash?
Yes, on all, I abstain for Elizabeth Welsh, board member.
Item thirteen is the audit presentation, do we have our auditor and attendants?
Certainly.
Warren, you want to share?
No, fine, I'll stand, it'll be very brief. You're on, you're on. Okay, fine, this is the acceptance of the 2016-17 audit that was filed in late November. By statutory, you have to have this audit, there's two reports that should have been filed with the board, they have them, one's the CAPRA, which is the financial statement, and one's the audit of the management report, both of these reports are required by the State Department of Education, this one's required by the Government Accounting Standards Board, this is strictly a state document. When we conduct the audit, it's not just a financial audit, it's also a compliance audit, and the small report, what's called the audit of the management report, there must be around fifteen or sixteen areas of compliance that the State Department of Education wants us to examine, audit, and go through on the record, and test everything from the Business Administrator's office and the Superintendent's office. Talks about payroll, insurance, encumbrances, you know, cafeteria student activity funds, and we have to report, there are no actual formal recommendations in this report, everything that we did ask Kathy for was either backed up by records, supported by documentation, and everything we received is in accordance with state regulations.
Warren, I want to stop you there, and I want to emphasize that as a superintendent, we have a budget upwards of a hundred and twenty million dollars?
Prox, yeah.
Prox. The only time you don't want to, you do not want a recommendation from the audit, okay? A recommendation is a death, and a recommendation means that you've done something that is questionable, you possibly made a mistake, so a hundred and twenty million dollar budget to have an audit, a very, very thorough audit that takes months, to come back with zero recommendations is a testament to our Business Administrator, Miss Gaylord, who I could not, I could not do without, okay? And the fact that we don't have to worry about the money because Kathy's in charge is a, is a very good thing for this board, your, the money's in good hands, and this is my fifth year, my fifth audit, and we have not had a recommendation in five years, Kathy's been doing this now eighteen years in Linden? In Linden, the only time I ever remember a recommendation, it wasn't, didn't have anything to do with Kathy, it had to do with a school student activity account, so...
I remember when the war changed in the middle of the year.
Right, so we're very, very, very blessed to have Kathy here, and that's a very good thing to hear, and Warren, if you would...
Well, I, I emphasize, we do around thirty-eight Board of Educations, I think there's only two or three that had no recommendations, and the board of this size, because you have a lot of federal state grants, so there are a lot of compliance areas that we do test that can really trip up anybody, there's a lot of things we look for, and anytime we ask for something, you know, the order to come in, the one you're asking for is not there, you know, it's just a, you know, par for the course, but everything we did ask for was there, so I mean, it is, you take your hat off to what you do.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for the auditor?
I just have a couple, of course, it's always me. But very minor questions, that I just, I don't have an understanding of, under the school food service?
Who's?
Yes, page six of the little report, the school food service program was not selected as a major federal or state program, can you say?
You're under a compliance, is it, with a federal mandate, it's called a federal single audit, if the amount of expenditures are in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a program you have to pick, and since this did not qualify for it, it wasn't picked, so it's not a federal single audit purpose. It rotates, the programs rotate every year, so like every third year, you kind of get the decision, not one year goes.
And then, the, the audit, page twenty-eight, under revenues, local sources, it says tuition, tuition from other LEAs and tuition from other sources, what is the differentiation between tuition and tuition from other sources?
I think other sources are individuals, as far as local education associations, other school districts, those individuals.
Well, I know the LEAs are the other school districts, but it says tuition from other sources and tuition, there were local twenty-eight thousand...
It's like state programs, in other words, it's like a debit and credit under state aid, where you send people out, so in other words, it's not from a, it's not, it could be from the State Department of Education, directly, in other words, they short your aid out and you get aid coming back.
And is also the tuition that the state pays is similar to the...
I would assume that that was the tuition from others?
That's the others.
That's the others, right, so I just wanted to know what the difference was between tuition. And then my only other question is, not necessarily for you, but for Miss Gaylord, the enterprise fund detail, I get a look at the detail, could you go over that one? That's just my own personal, that's it, I'm going.
How is our financial outlook?
It's, it's great, I just wanted to say, in other words, this, the big reports hold a comprehensive annual financial report, it's not just financial data, it's also demographic, statistics, and a lot of, 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 non-financial information in here, so if you get a chance to look at that, I know it's a little bit boring, but it's a lot of information here about the district as a whole, and about the municipality as a whole, there's one as board members should probably look, it starts on page seventy-nine, goes to ninety-three, it's called the C1, and the only reason I like this schedule, because it's very detailed in its presentation, a lot of the schedules in a report are summarized and are trumped in, you really can't tell what's going on, but if you look at the C1, it starts with your revenues by detail, it starts with your budget, actually emulates the budget document that you're probably going to be in the op for eighteen, nineteen, coming up soon, and it lists the budget of your appropriated transfers, what was expended and what was actually left, but it also acts as a profit and loss, and you did end the year with approximately twenty-five million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of surplus, however, it's not all free and clear, it's different components, you have your capital reserve account, fifteen million dollars, that's for any kind of capital improvement you want to do, five-year useful life, anything big, buildings, major improvements, you have the surplus that you're using in this budget, two million, one seven, your excess surplus, what they call it, surplus that you're using in eighteen, nineteen budgets, two million, eight, you have encumbrances of a million, six, and that's your surplus that Kathy gave out orders at year-end that weren't completed by June 30th and 17th, and you have surplus that you're using in the seventeen, eighteen budget, four hundred and eight thousand, and then what's considered your free and clear on the signed surplus is two million, three seventy-seven, so you go from the twenty-five million to two million, three seventy-seven, that's what you can use in the budget coming forward for any contingencies during the year, that's basically, if you have any questions about anything else we do.
Got one question, sure. On page one thirty-three, it's a large one, the City of Linden School District assess value, an actual value of taxable property, what is, under district property, the first amendment is vacant land, page one thirty-three?
Okay. I'm sorry, I'll page it down.
One thirty-three?
Okay, that's, that's, that comes from the Tax Office of the City of Linden, in other words, you have your, this is called your tax base, and it's broken down, down by these different components, vacant land, residential, commercial apartments, very, that's the valuation that's put on, that's on the tax assessors' books at that point in time.
So that we own some type of vacant land?
No, it's not what you own, this is, this is, this is the city, that's what I'm saying, the report must say, call it a CAPRA, it's not just board of ed, it's, it's community-wide presentation.
Any last questions, Mrs. Shahada, will you move by to thirteen?
Before that, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Can I just acknowledge Pam Pepperell and Tiffany Munoz, for all the hard work they do as well, this isn't just about them.
She's our Assistant DA, and Tiffany is our Staff Accountant, so, and they do a lot of behind-the-scenes work, I'm not sure what you guys do, but... I'm not sure what you guys do back there.
But it's all, it's always right, though. It's always good. Okay. You guys. I'd like to move item number ten for a vote. Uh, thirteen students.
Just read the, read the tabloids.
In accordance with eighteen A, colon, twenty-three dash five, except for audit reports for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year prepared by Supley, colon, and Company Westwood, New Jersey, report contains no recommendations. I'd like to put it to a vote.
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bebiana.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. DeYoung.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ozak.
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Shahada.
Abstain.
Mr. Tapuleski.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Next one.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you. All right, uh, I will, uh, ask board members first if they have any comments they'd like to make about anything else. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, first, I would just like to take a second to remember that one year ago this month, we lost, um, Mama Huda, and, uh, she served twenty years on board bed, working hard for our children, so I just wanted to say that we still remember, she's still in our hearts. Um, second, I would like to welcome the new board members. Uh, it's a lot more work than everybody told me, so I'm sorry about that. And, um, all I ask is that you come in, do your homework, be ethical, and we will work together to make this a great district.
Anyone else have any, yes, Mrs. Welch?
Um, I, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Although I was not elected to this position, um, it, it means no less to me. I grew up in this town, I am so honored to sit up here and serve. Um, for the past, I don't even know, five or six years, I've been to almost every single board meeting, so I've kind of felt like a part of it anyway. So I hope that I can do as much on this side, um, as I did when I was on that side. And, um, since we moved our meetings, I hope to see many more of you parents and everyone, politicians, whoever, come to our meetings and see what we do, um, see it firsthand. And, again, thank you so much for having me, um, I've worked really hard to do the best that I can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
If no one else has any comments, I have the town members, Tapuleski, if I may. Uh, I can get a chance to formally welcome our new board members, so I would like to formally welcome Mr. Shahada, Ms. DeYoung, Ms. Ozak to the board. Uh, Mrs. Welch, our first meeting, although she's been on the board, uh, first meeting, welcome. Um, this is an amazing district that I truly love. You, those who know me, uh, know that already, if you don't know me, you'll learn that very quickly. Um, we have so many amazing things going on in this district, and you will see that, um, shortly. You are welcome at all of our activities, at our events. This board has a great deal of influence, I believe in the democratic process. You weren't here because you represent our community, the diverse interests of our community. We represent children, and I look forward to working with you so that we can all make the best decisions for our kids, let's do what's best for our kids. That should always be the basis of our discussions and decisions. So, welcome, thank you.
Can I just say one more thing, I forgot, Mrs. Burke and I, um, did the rounds at the winter concerts, and I have to tell you, I don't even know how many we went to, but they were absolutely, absolutely amazing. And I have to say, I haven't been to a lot of these schools in many years, since I was young, I grew up here, I went to school three, school one, McManus, the high school, um, and I have, I, I can't even tell you, please, go to these events. You don't have to have children in the school to attend an event. Um, there's plays coming up and different things going on at the high school. Go to your schools and see what is going on there. There are amazing things going on. So there is talent, and there are kids here that you, you can't even imagine the things that they are doing. So please, follow all of our Twitters and all of our websites and everything, and see what's going on, and come out and, and, and join us.
It's just not just sports.
Yes, it's not just.
Not just sports. You've got a lot more stuff besides sports. Although we're pretty good at sports.
Although I went to McManus wrestling, uh, McManus Soul Wrestling today, and they did an awesome job, too.
Go to middle school sports.
Middle school sports, that's right.
I'll be there.
Okay, uh, just to the other board members, uh, if, if you look at your order of business, you will see that there are committees. Uh, what I would say to you now is, if you have a particular interest in one of those committees or whatever, uh, simply email me, uh, what you would be interested in, in serving on, and, uh, I will be making those appointments, uh, in, at the January meeting, okay?
Before you leave tonight, new board members, I want to get you set up with your email address, so please see me, we'll go in my office before you leave, we'll get you set up with your computer and your email addresses.
Okay. And one other thing, uh, you guys don't know, most of you know, I am the unique county school board's president.
Do you?
And, oh, yeah. And, uh, we have about five meetings a year. The next meeting's coming up on Ja, uh, January seventeenth. It is at the Westwood. It is food. Besides, there is a, um, there is a breakout session in those, there's one for new board members.